Remain standing for the plagues of allegiance.
Thank you for inviting me to come back again this year. So, let us bow our heads, close our eyes, and humble our hearts as we approach the throne of grace. Holy, eternal, and all-wise God, we come before you this evening to thank you for life, a reasonable measure of health, and strength during this continuing pandemic. We ask for your blessings and protection over all the people who live and serve in With County, Virginia. Lord God, we ask you to provide for those in need, give hope to those who have misplaced their hope, and restore the joy to those who are feeling less than joyful. Fill us with an overwhelming love for our neighbors during this season and beyond. Lord God, give us peace, and let that peace begin with each of us. Lord God, we ask that as our Board of Supervisors wrestle with the business of With County, may they, in wisdom, compassion, love, kindness, and goodness, take courage as they make decisions on behalf of the citizens. May we always know the sovereign Lord is with our Board of Supervisors. We pray these things in the name of the one who came to give us grace upon grace. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda tonight is the presentation of a resolution for a retiring board member who I'm confident saying is near and dear to everybody's heart that sits up here and then people that sit up here before us. Mr. Coy McRoberts, if you'll come on down. It is. It's blank on the amount line and the signature line. This will be Coy's last meeting. And, thank God. And I'll have to say personally, I've known Coy going on better part of 20 years. And when I first started as a school resource officer at Fort Chiswell, I knew absolutely nobody. Coy was on the school board and was one of the first people I met. And he ended every conversation about the same way he ends them now. If you need anything, give me a call. You could throw a golf ball in With County and hit 10 people that has this man's phone number on speed dial. With County Resolution 2021-42, a resolution honoring Coy L. McRoberts. Whereas Coy L. McRoberts was elected on November the 3rd, 2009, by the citizens of With County's Lead Mines District to serve as their representative on the With County Board of Supervisors and began serving on January 1, 2010. And whereas Coy L. McRoberts served as a dedicated member of the Board of Supervisors for three consecutive four-year terms. And whereas he devoted countless hours to serving on various committees and authorities, most recently serving on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, Fire and Rescue Committee, Water Committee, and the Withland Joint Public Service Authority. And whereas he previously served as a member of the With County Planning Commission and With County School Board. And whereas he was actively involved with promoting funding for fire department vehicles, rescue squad vehicles, and building improvements, school capital improvements, and extending public water in areas where service was strongly desired. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors, assembled in regular session in Withfield, Virginia, this 28th day of December, 2021, does hereby express its appreciation on behalf of the citizens of With County to this distinguished gentleman for a job well done and does convey its best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. And be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors does hereby direct that this resolution be incorporated in the official minutes of this board and that a framed copy be given to Coy L. McRoberts as a token of their high regard. Adopted this 28th day of December, 2021, signed Brian W. Vault, Chair. With that, I'll open the floor for a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, and it's truly been an honor.
I do have a... I do have one thing I would like to say. You know, for 11, 11 years, I've tried to get a building in the Burn Springs area. And we're as close now as we ever been. So I'm asking you, keep that in mind, boys. Them kids need that, them old people need that. Don't forget it. And that's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
And Coy, we did get you a gift, because you might need to know what time it is with all this leisure time. Moving on with the agenda, the next item is citizens' time. We don't have anybody signed up to speak for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Each supervisor has received in their board package a copy of the invoices to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any invoice that any supervisor wants to pull out or discuss? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from December the 14th, 2021. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business with the supervisors, district, and voting precinct ordinance. Mr. Baird?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you are aware, we held a public hearing on this at the end of November. Did have a comment that was made. I wasn't able to discuss with the individual the concerns about where the district lines were, but unfortunately, the lines have to be drawn somewhere. And sometimes the person across the street from you is in a different district than you're in. You've got to go vote there. My recommendation to the board is to adopt this ordinance to establish the supervisors, district, and voting precinct. As previously stated, there are no changes from the last redistricting, so the lines will stay the same.
Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2021-06.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second by Mr. Smith? Is there any questions or discussion? I'll just say along the same lines as Mr. Baird, the comment about people having to drive, I agree. But unfortunately, looking at the population numbers, the only way we can adjust that would make it worse. Maybe Mr. Horni could encourage some growth. Does anybody else have anything? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item under old business is appointments.
Informational, Mr. Chairman, just reminding everyone of the appointments coming up. It might not hurt for us to just, out on our social media pages, just to put a list of people if they're interested in any of our non-board appointment positions or whatever out there that express interest in, so just providing that for your informational purposes.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion on the appointments? All right, moving on. Anything else under old business? Mr. Baird?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything.
Moving on to reports. First item, the treasurer's not going to be here, but we do have a financial report on the agenda.
Ms. Williams, do you want to give just a brief overview and an update on some of the numbers? As y'all know, Ms. Gwen had left her family recently, and she sent me a message earlier today. She will not be able to be here tonight.
At the end of November, our consolidated funds account consisted of And of that amount, $44,656,491 was the general fund. I did a little calculation of the taxes they had collected by the end of November at the treasurer's office. They'd collected 40%, which was $8,424,498. And I have this broken down into different categories if you want more information. I'm sure they were busy the first week of December, and we'll have a large, another large amount in our report in December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gwen. Next item under the treasurer's reports, the credit card purchases.
Yes, as you're aware, Ms. Gwen came and talked to y'all previously. She had been working with the company. As you know, our bank for years had provided us the luxury of not charging us any fees, as Ms. Gwen indicated. That was a savings of about $100,000 to the county in the process over those years. The bank ended that agreement for, not just With County, but for all localities that they were dealing with. Ms. Gwen had been working with Thrive Payments, who was the credit card, I guess, third-party credit card provider, had been working with it. The recommendation in moving forward is that all transactions in the future have a 3% charge on them. Many of y'all familiar, a lot of, a lot of small business and things, you see this on now. But basically, it's a 3% transaction fee for doing the business by credit card. Ms. Gwen felt like that was best for their office. It was very difficult to... It's, the cards are very convenient for payments, water department. We certainly felt like we needed to be continuing to take payments for water and wastewater. But in order to cover the cost, we need to implement the 3% fee. So, Ms. Gwen has sent the information. And we also had to get new credit card machines and all that. So we have ordered new credit card machines. The IT department has worked this week to run some Wi-Fi to the commissioner's office. Having Wi-Fi credit card machines helps out some in the, actually in compliance and also in the transmission, because it's coded. It's actually better under Wi-Fi than under the wired, under the networks. They've been able to do that. That equipment has been ordered. So, that's an update on it. I would request that she's established a 3% fee for obviously the treasurer's office and all that. I would recommend that we go ahead and take a motion to establish a 3% fee for all the payments coming through the With County Board of Supervisors.
Is there any questions or discussion? I know, what was the number that she gave us that did cost us weed?
It's around $98,000, $99,000 or so that had been absorbed previously. And that's, if Ms. Lawson pays a water bill, we've got to credit her water bill $20. But then we've got to, we can't take it out of that. We've got to just come up with the funding to pay the 3% fee or whatever is associated with it. That gets a lot more tedious to track and keep up with in the process, the 3% transaction fee. We'll start, we'll advertise it, we'll put it on our water bills, we'll put it on our websites, all of those things.
And I, and I think I've said this before, but I write one check a month to tell them to retreat because they charge a convenience fee, and I don't want to pay it, so... I get to practice my cursive. Is there any more questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the 3% fee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. McRoberts. Do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. If you didn't notice by everybody's happy tone, really wasn't something wrong to do.
It's very unfortunate, but I know it's our only choice.
Anything else under the treasurer's report, Mr. Baird?
No, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the sheriff report. Sheriff Foster?
I should have just left you up here, Mr. McRoberts. I want to present you something on behalf of the sheriff.
Coy said he ain't never coming back. There's too much movement. Anything else, Sheriff?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The commissioner of revenues unable to be here tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to, Mr. Cola Becky is here from, Becky O. is here from Wamparinees. And I'd like to make a brief presentation to you all about the status of our reassessment and request for an extension. How do you pronounce your last name?
Cola Becky O. There's an "O" on the end. A lot of people miss that. And it's a "C" at the beginning, not a "K." Some people like to put "K" at the beginning. All right, so I think I spoke to you back in July. Gave you some rough idea how the process for the reassessment works. We started on the project around November, October of last year. As part of this reassessment, there's also a data conversion being performed. So the county has acquired new software, and the data from the old system is being, had to be imported into the new system. And during that process, a number of things do not translate. So whenever you do a conversion of data, to some extent, it's going to be hammering a square peg into a round hole. So the parts of that square peg that aren't going to fit have to be manually re-entered and checked for. So, we expect to finalize our values somewhere near the end of January. And the notice should be mailed out around that time. Printer can, has a turnaround time once they get a data file of around four to, four days. The reassessment notice will contain the new land assessment, building assessment, total assessment. And that will be market value. It will not include land use assessment or any tax relief information of that nature. It will also contain the prior two years of assessed values and the associated tax rates and the levy for those years. That's what's required by the state code. Of course, we won't have the rate for the, for 2022. So the property owners will be able to request a review of the reassessment. They'll be able to do it by mail, by email, by phone. We will not be doing, because of COVID, we're not going to be doing face-to-face interviews, but we will contact people. We will call them and discuss the assessment if they request it. People can send us any pertinent data that they want. Any documents that people want from us to justify the value, what sales were in their area, their property record card, we can send that to them electronically. Or, you know, if they don't have the means of doing that, then we can send it to them by mail. So, the typical results, we do not have the values finalized, but you basically have four classes of taxable property. You have residential, which is divided into urban and suburban. You have multifamily, which is apartments. You have commercial, which is commercial, retail, industrial, manufacturing, warehousing. And then you would have agricultural property. So, what we're seeing based on the 2021 sales, and we have most of that data now, we have up until this month. The typical residential property from 2017, based on the new market data, is showing a roughly 23% increase. And that's a median. So, that is going to be a property that's typically in average condition, it's been well-maintained. If it's higher price range, it may not be that much of an increase. If it's lower price range, at the bottom of the market, it may be higher than that. You know, it all has to do with demand. The more affordable properties are more in demand. If the property has had work done to it that was not reflected in the previous assessment, that would also be more than that increase. The multifamily properties, which are apartments, that's, from what we can see right now, it's probably going to be around 10 to a 15% typically increase. Commercial property, and commercial property is a pretty diverse class. It's a lot of different types of property. We'll be seeing a modest increase there of around 5 to 10%. And agricultural property is going to have a very modest change, probably 5% or less. Land in general, based on the new market data and the previous assessments, has not changed much. So, the properties are not selling drastically different than what they've been assessed at for just land. So, most of the change in value is going to be in the buildings. And most of it's going to be in the residential portion of the tax base. So, other, other reassessments we've completed this year, we've completed Nelson County. They had about 28% increase in their residential base. And Palatton County had about 10% increase in their residential base, but that's for a two-year period. They do theirs every two years. So, and Nelson County does theirs every four years. So, five years, an increase somewhere in the low 20s. It's going to be about 5% a year, sorry, about 4% a year is what it works out to. Any other questions?
Seeing by having questions?
Now...
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Typically, if, if the job, if the reassessment's going to extend past the first of the year, we would have to request an extension. The process for that would, what we've done in the past, we've, last year, we've, we got an extension for Buchanan County. So, we would give a request to the county attorney typically. The board would pass a resolution to approve the extension, and then the judge for the circuit court would approve that. So that's typically the process.
And I will say that, and Mr. Hankins worked with him quite a bit at the very beginning of this as well. We did switch over to the vision camera system in this whole process. It has been a tremendous amount of keen and changeover. We were on one of our former IT director's handwritten programs, David Southers' program, that we have converted to. So, I, I don't think the request is unreasonable what they're asking for. And I think, I think we should recommend it. He was going to provide us a letter, and I have already provided you all with a resolution to go with it. And what I would request that the county attorney has no objections to it, is for you all to go ahead and approve this resolution. And I put out there, you don't, you think you'll be done by end of January?
Yeah, typically, that, when, when the state, by the code, you know, an extension is for 90 days. But we don't want 90 days, and we're not going to need 90 days. And basically, because we have other jobs going on right now, so I'm falling behind on the next job I'm supposed to be supervising. But every day that you spend on this process now, it is going to make a better reassessment. And a lot of you are going to end up getting calls anyway, no matter how good it is. So, Mr. McRoberts will probably get most of them, because everybody has his number. Hopefully, that doesn't happen, but...
What is, what is the additional cost of the county for this extension?
No cost. I mean, we're not, we're not charging anything extra for it. I mean, it's part of the contract. So, this is really to assure the accuracy of all the data that was transferred from the old system to the new system, because it's, there's all kinds of wonky things that you cannot foresee. Things get doubled up, things get dropped. You might have a value for an outbuilding, and then when it gets into the new system, the description is there, but there's no value. Or the value is way higher than it should be.
And how old was that old system?
Oh, I would say late 90s.
That's what I...
Was it only 30? Okay. Why?
That's the year I was born.
Well, I mean, it seemed to work pretty well, I mean, for what it was. I mean, it's pretty remarkable, but it's time to switch over, so...
Anyway, I would make a request for approval of the resolution.
Open the floor for a motion to approve 2021-44, the resolution that's been presented. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Ms. Collins, you'll remind me before I leave, I'll sign that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Have the consent calendar that's been provided. Entertain a motion to approve as presented. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? I'll, one thing under personnel, I believe the gentleman's name is Russo. I believe there's an extra "in" on that. That's what I figured. All right, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item under new business is the fiscal year 2022 expenditure budget, third quarter appropriations. Mr. Baird?
This is just the regular monthly, or regularly quarterly... This is just the regular monthly, or regularly quarterly appropriations for the third quarter, would request your all's approval.
Entertaining a motion to approve the third quarter appropriation.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, can I ask a question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
The, I'd like to discuss line of the 8110, which is the Apex Center. I think we agreed to fund them for the first $100,000, and it's in there, and based on the Stella financial report for the last time, I, I cannot vote to support this based on where we at, $120,000 loss essentially. I can't vote to throw more money at that place.
Sir, you want to make a motion to pull 81, what is it?
I think it's 8110. I'd like to pull it to the side, because I don't want to see everybody else get, I don't want to vote against everything else, but I can't vote to support that.
Have a motion to pull 81, line item 8110, from the operations budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have an additional question, so, I don't know, Mr. Terry's talking about 8110, but you also got 8112, is that just a pass through?
That is a pass through, yes, sir.
I retract my question, Mr. Chairman.
Let me say this out.
Do what, sir?
Let me say it when? The other. Air conditioning. No, the Apex Center, Apex. I just hope I live that long, Cor. Is there any more questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 No.
No.
Aye.
All right, so that was to move that, now do we go back and approve the?
I would request approval of the?
Third quarter appropriations.
With the exception of the 8110 that's been removed.
All right, entertaining a motion to approve the third quarter with the exception of 8110.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Have a second by Mr. McRoberts. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item under new business is the lots gap water tank project resolution. Mr. Bear, is this yours, or Mr. Hankins?
This is mine. As you all know, we are working.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the board wants to take up what was removed to vote on separately or not, for the appropriation. You removed it from the appropriation, passed it, I don't know if the board needs to take up whether to appropriate that for the quarter. So, the motion was to remove it from the appropriations, and you voted on everything else.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bear might be able to correct me, but I think you need to vote on, well, maybe you don't need to vote on it, is the board's pleasure?
I mean, we, we vote on, we voted on it as a block. We voted to remove it as a block. Then we voted on all of the lists, so I don't, I mean, we can vote, but the vote's probably going to be the same.
I'm asking the question, because I, I wasn't quite sure procedurally what should happen, so I'm good either way, however you want to proceed, but I just wanted to ask that question. I didn't know if we needed to address it or not.
I mean.
It's obviously not approved, but I didn't know if it needed to be.
I think right now, it's just not approved for a third quarter appropriation.
For a third quarter appropriations, okay. Sorry to interrupt, I apologize.
And I mean, lest anybody, I mean, Matt or Steven, I, that's the way I.
Well, anybody could make the motion to approve that appropriation if they wanted to, at this point.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay.
Well, when it comes to things like salary and things like that, that will still, that would come to us as a separate. As a pastor. Okay, I'm sorry.
Anything else on that?
I apologize, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Bear, back to you on the water tank.
Oh, yeah, this is, as you all know, we are looking for all the sources of funding that we have for our project, projects associated with Blue Star. Originally, we were looking at getting a million dollars from DHCD in grant funding. By doing it as a regional project, which takes two entities, we can get two and a half million dollars. We've been working with Brian Reed from the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. They, we have held two public hearings, one was a joint public hearing at the Joint Governing Bodies Meeting, and then another public input meeting was held yesterday, yesterday at the town of Whitfield's offices, for anyone interested in specific on this application. Basically, we are applying for two and a half million dollars of DHCD funding, which will go towards the lots gap tank. I would request the board's approval of this resolution.
Entertaining a motion to approve Resolution 2021-43.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Mr. Bear, do you know when that will be awarded, or timeframe?
Application has to begin by December 31st. So, Mr. Reed will be calling me the 30th, or the 31st, or whatever, for me to go in and hit the submit button for the application to go in, and then the award date hopefully will be within a couple months after that.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our 2022 draft rules of procedure and meeting calendar.
Informational purposes, Chairman, changes as you all had requested have been added. If there's anything else, let us know before our first meeting in January, when these will be adopted.
Anything else under new business?
I do have one thing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I know we're, I think we'd set aside like two, two and a half million dollars for broadband that we don't have to use because of the, the change with the governor, what they've done for our broadband expansion. And sitting on the Fire and Rescue Committee, I get a lot of complaints, a lot of concerns about our radio system, and that we've made some investments in that, but is it possible or feasible to maybe look and invest a little bit more money in our radio system so we can get them where they're consistently, where they need to be?
Yes, sir. Staff has been reviewing some recommendations on what to do with that $2 million that we're not going to use on broadband, and public, public service radio is our number one choice. So, we intend to bring you a package in January that spells that out. I've got Mr. McCabe looking at some pricing, whether we do it, or whether we bring in a contractor to do it. Obviously, it'll be more expensive if we bring in a contractor, but we'll be done sooner, so.
Yes, sir.
We'll bring you a recommendation, probably at your first January meeting, on how to proceed with that.
That's part of it. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to channel my, Mr. Smith, when I say this, but, you know, for probably going on close to 30 years, I've been around the radio system with him, and it's always been something patched together. We have a chance to do it right, and not spend a dime of taxpayer money. So, I'm going to channel my James Smith, let's get it done right, turn the keys, and not piece them in together.
I'm right there with you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to do it in a way that leaves you some, some additional money to use for water and sewer on other projects, though, but I do think it needs to be a priority.
Anything else, Mr. Terry?
That's all I've got for now, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else under new business? All right, moving on to staff reports. Got the hot night, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I do have four action items that I would request your, your consideration for tonight. The first, as Mr. Sherry mentioned, we have, we've seen the broadband be funded, it does not require a local investment. It does also not require a public-private partnership like we had envisioned for the last year. So, to clean up our procurement, I would ask that the board reject all the public-private partnership proposals that we received for broadband development, so that we can notify the, those companies that made our proposals, and go ahead and formalize the closure.
So, you just need action from us?
Yes, sir, a motion to reject all submitted proposals for broadband development.
Entertaining a motion to reject all proposals for broadband development. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any question or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So rejected.
Thank you. The second item, the county and the town of Whitfield partner every year on an annual visitors guide. It's one of the collateral pieces that visitors can use when they get here, or that the visitor center can send out to folks who are thinking about visiting here. It's a $15,000 budgeted item for the year. I would ask that you appropriate the full $15,000 so that we can pay that bill when it comes to you in January.
And, excuse me, entertain a motion to appropriate the $15,000 from 7100-455010 for the annual visitor's guide.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Staff has started to advertise for a deputy director position for the 911 dispatch center. That was based off of some guidance that we had received from the board, but we need to officially add a deputy director position to the 911 center. So, I would ask that you authorize that position, so that we can proceed with hiring in January.
Entertaining a motion to authorize the addition of the deputy director position for the 911 center?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cook.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Mr. Hankins, I know, I probably know the answer, but do you already have a job description specifically for this new position?
Yes, sir, we have the job description, and we have started to advertise it. We've also talked about some, some additional positions, shift coordinator and some shift, shift supervisors. We can discuss those tonight, or we can discuss them at a later meeting.
All right, thanks, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
And the final action item, I would request, after some conversations with the county attorney, we've determined that we need to have a, an operating agreement, or a memorandum of understanding with Max Meadows Fire Department, outlining the operating procedures that we'll use when we put part-time firefighters in that station. I would, I don't know that I need to ask, but I will ask that you authorize the staff to negotiate that memorandum of agreement with the Max Meadows Fire Department.
So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Terry to authorize staff to complete the memorandum of agreement. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is that, do we have to do the, do we have to do this vote on it? I think that's well in Mr. Hankins's job description. I mean, it's my opinion.
I'd, I would agree, I mean.
I don't think we, we need to pass anything given him that authorization that's, that's well within his, his authority, in my opinion.
Are y'all fine with us proceeding with executing that memorandum of agreement, or do you all want it to come back to you all for execution? That was, we'd like to move forward with it as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
You want to withdraw your, withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll draw my second.
Yeah, yeah.
Just didn't want to move forward without all of the board being aware, the Fire and Rescue Committee members were aware, but wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Mr. Chairman, I think the, in the end, once that agreement is finalized, I think you should come back to the board for review and authorization to enter into that agreement from the board, versus the staff entering agreements without your direction or consent. I just think it's a good practice to do that, if possible. That's just my recommendation, board do what they want, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, ultimately, it's, it's, it's the county department, I guess that was my thinking. But, yeah, I mean, you bring it back and get it drawn up and we'll look at it. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
Real quick, just from a personnel perspective, we have three positions that are open. The dispatcher positions, we started advertising on November 19th, and up until the time this report was authored, we'd received three applications. Yesterday, I changed tack and started advertising through Facebook jobs and looking at other alternatives, and we've received 17 or 18 interested folks who have submitted interest. We will work with those folks, try to screen through and see if we have good applicants. There were some who had law enforcement experience and fire experience, who may wind up being good dispatchers. So, we certainly sort through and try to fill some of those vacant positions that we have down there. We opened the firefighter positions on December the 7th, and we've received four applications for those part-time positions to date. We'd probably really like to have at least eight that we can pull from, just because we're going to have to schedule around folks who work at other departments. So, we're trying to get our pool as deep as we can, so if you know folks who are interested in that, we'd like to talk to them. And then we've, we opened the deputy director of dispatch position on the 21st, and we've already received one application from someone who's qualified enough to give an interview to. So, we're trying to make some progress on those. Any questions on personnel?
What's the, what's the turnaround time? What are we looking at on the part-time folks at Max Meadows?
Once we have the agreement in place with Max Meadows, we could proceed pretty quickly. So, I would say January. I don't know if it's early January or late January, but I would lean more toward late January.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins on that?
Mr. Hankins, any, any concerns on getting the additional four, if not more?
We'll continue to keep positions open until we've filled enough to keep a rotation in. Early on, we may have to have a day or two a week where we're not covered there, just because we don't have personnel available, but as soon as we can assemble enough that we can put together regular shifts, we will proceed.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm not saying anybody's discouraging people to apply, but it kind of makes you wonder, you know, that's all we heard, we needed, we needed, we needed, and now we're not getting response. So, a little bit discouraging from my standpoint, but we are sharing it, and I know you've got it on social media, and I know pretty much all of us have shared it, and, so, just keep us up to date if you need anything from us.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
On grants and external funding, just so all of the board is aware, we've submitted a $450,000 rail industrial grant application to the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. In order to be considered by the Commonwealth Transportation Board for that funding, you have to score at least 50 in their scoring criteria, and we scored 70, so no real surprises. This is for the, the Blue Star project, so the state wants to be a good partner in this. We've reached out to our new representative on the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and we'll brief them prior to their meeting. They expect that it will be considered at the February meeting, I believe it's February We received note, something that's not on your report, we received notification this afternoon that we did not receive the DCJS grant for doing the new corridor for Circuit Court, so we'll have to look at other funding sources for that project. That was the one that's designed to protect the staff of both Circuit and General District Court a little more than they are now from prisoners being carried through to the holding And you all have received my written report, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
On the, one thing on your report on the broadband, Mr. Hankins, can we go ahead and get the information out there, because I know out toward the retreat late, Point Broadband has got. Because I know out toward the retreat lake, Point Broadband's got yard signs up that broadband's available out there. And I went home and plugged in the address and well, it said it's cheaper than what I'm paying to come to retreat. For higher speed. But I wasn't aware that they even had it, I know, I think somebody said there were some areas in Speedwell, I don't know.
I haven't heard.
Yeah, one of our county employees said a few weeks ago that they came by and were running lines by his house.
And apparently they've been, kind of like Chantel did when they came, they've been going door to door.
Yep.
Telling people. But if you get on Point Broadband's website, you can enter your address and then it'll tell you what's available. It, it's a, it's a really good price point compared to what I've been paying to.
Well, and I think the board's sentiment, and you can tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but this is a public service priority, you know, letting folks know that broadband is available. So as it becomes available, even though we'll technically be helping a private company, we're helping the public good by making folks aware that the service is available. So we'll do that at your pleasure.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hankins? And one more thing, the retreat lately is my favorite.
I have reached out to Delegate Campbell. He indicates that he's working on it, but he has not received a response. Part of that may be that the General Assembly's office, as you know, is changing hands and there's some turnover in the staffing there. So that may hinder us again, but we will certainly ask them. What I ask in the letter is that if our members of the General Assembly don't get a response or an answer by the end of December, that they consider including legislation before the General Assembly this year that would force the hand of the Attorney General's office and put a lease in place.
Not to get on my movement at the speed of government, Mr. Bear, but we are literally no closer than we were four years ago when I started my term. And that is the only thing I can say that about.
I, I think, and Tom Hampton from DWR now will agree with that. And I do not know why the Attorney General's office has held that up. I mean, we basically agreed to everything they requested, which included taking away several of the acres of land that we have out there now opposite, on the opposite side of the road, you know, which wasn't part of the campground, it wasn't part of the pool, it wasn't all that. So, you know, we agreed that if they wanted that back, you know, as long as we still had the lake and the campground and all those things to operate. But I have no idea as to why it has been held up beyond that.
I mean, we are literally closer to having high-speed internet in Crawfish than we are to get this lease signed. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Hankins.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Collins, I know Mr. Valt mentioned signing the resolution on the general reassessment. We need to make sure that Community Development Block Grant Resolution is also signed tonight so we can send that to Mr. Reed tomorrow. First item on the agenda is Lot One access agreement. If you all remember, STS Corporation has announced some time back that they were planning on coming to Lot One. They've gone through some, I'll just call it reorganizations, and what they've done. Aggracell has contacted us and has requested access to the lot in order to start doing some of their borings and test work on the site. You have an access agreement within your package. We added in there that there's an existing agricultural lease and that the purchasers acknowledge that and make certain they keep all the gates closed during the inspection while the, while that's going on. I would request the board's approval of the access agreement with Aggracell Incorporated.
Entertain a motion to approve the access agreement as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Next is a grant from DCJS for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I would request board approval on this grant.
Entertain a motion to approve the grant award for forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Hold on. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is this the B stop that's through the Commonwealth?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next is a facility site plan and M&amp;H Consulting is the work that is working, consulting firm that is working with Blue Star. They were actually on-site here last week, meeting with us. They are continuing to develop their plan. As you are aware, we are splitting twenty-four into two lots to convey to them. Twenty-four B is going to be the far southeastern corner of the lot, basically from railroad tracks to the east. This is, that is where the nitro plant will go. Page one-seventy-two of your package basically shows the location of that plant. Some of the plan is still a design in process. We have covenant requirements reviewed just with buildings and grounds the other day. They have submitted a letter into us and basically they're requesting approval on the site plan as submitted, but they do want to add a few things to it. They will come back and add things. They've got to design an entrance design to it and signage plan to go with it. Currently, when you come into the cul-de-sac, you're going to run all the way across to twenty-four B. The entrance to this lot will actually be all the way down near Lane Enterprises at the pipe manufacturing plant up on top of the hill there. That will be where the entrance is and its guardhouse area. The covenants require that they can request, excludes fencing unless approved by the board supervisors. This is a chemical processing plant, they have to have fencing. So they've indicated as a waiver, but basically they're requesting permission to put the required fencing that they need to have around this site. This site will be a very restricted site due to it being a chemical plant, the chemical reactions and everything going on. They are requesting to only have landscaping on the outside of the fenced-in area of the facility. That inside the area, it's a chemical plant, they're not going to have a lot of things in there, they're not going to have equipment in there mowing, so they don't want to have landscaping. They will plant trees along the boundary line between twenty-four A and twenty-four B to create a buffer. The lighting plan, they have not submitted a lighting plan. They indicate they will submit a lighting plan. They do request for a waiver on the lighting which the coordinates say the lighting type, the maximum mounting height for any lighting fixture shall be twenty-five feet except as exempted by Whit County. Been the latter, they have talked about using thirty-foot lights on their site and they've indicated that's just consistent with what they have been using at chemical plants and what they're doing. So they have requested you all's approval on that waiver, but they do need to still submit us a lighting plan. So I'll answer any questions you've got, but in summary, what I would recommend would be approval of the site plan as submitted with the following to be submitted, which is an entrance design and signage, a lighting plan and with granting the exemption for the thirty-foot poles, and a landscape plan with an exemption for the area within, inside the fenced area to be exempted from landscaping in that area. I'm glad to answer any questions that you all have.
I entertain a motion to approve the site plan with the exemptions that Mr. Bear noted to be, I guess, added later and brought back forth later.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson, is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would abstain from the vote.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The other item is a, if you'll let me add a couple of items here to discuss. Number one, Progress Park Sewer. You have a handout there in front of you of a map. One side's got it without the aerial photography, the other has it with the aerial photography. Following meetings with the company and following review by our engineering firm, previous plans and what I have shown you all before, we were going to use this existing wet well that was put in when the, back in around two thousand and three, two thousand and four, when the road and railroad corridor was first constructed. That wet well did not anticipate the volume of water that we will be receiving from Blue Star. After reviewing the pump station needs and also the volume and also that we are going to not be running across adjoining property but running along the road and dumping into the existing sewer line to the north, the engineers have recommended that we relocate and put in a force main down between thirty-two and thirty-five, put in a wet well and run our force main between thirty-two and thirty-five. For those of you that may have hunted on that area back in there, you realize there's a big drawl that runs through that area. This doesn't have any impact on the grading of thirty-two or the grading of Lot Thirty-five. They, it says maybe a thousand feet or so of force main that we would have to install in the process. County Engineer Kinsler, Water Wastewater Director Crisp, and I have reviewed. This is a better alternative for us, also because you're not dropping all the way down to the bottom, you're not losing as much of that head, you're not having to pump as much. It will have operational savings pumping across there and it's a wet well big enough that you can have the three pumps necessary within that wet well. So I wanted you all to see it just because it's not using the existing wet well that's down there. That can still be used in the future if we need it and at that time we would probably pump from there just up to this new pump station and then hunt across from there. I just wanted you all to be advised of it, if you all have any concerns about it. Otherwise, I am going to advise the engineering firm to proceed with this final design.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Bear? Sound good. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
The other item, we talked at the last meeting a little about minimum wage and minimum wage pay scales or with pay scales changing. I have a map that shows sort of our current pace or a handout that shows our current pay scales and then also what Mr. Hankins and I are reviewing for our new personnel policy that we are working on. Didn't know if you want to hand those out and discuss those tonight or if you want to do that another time, if you want to go through Personnel Committee first, however you all like to look at it.
Does anybody have a preference?
If you want me to email it to you and let you review it and talk about it and do it that way?
That's what I prefer.
Gives us more time.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We shall do that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Right, County Attorney Report, Mr. Farvey?
Mr. Chairman, not much to report this evening. We sent the resolutions on the Oakwood litigation on to our council, which was due early January, January second, January fourth, I think was their deadline. So we've got everything in that needs to go to them. Working with Mr. Bear a little bit on a solar panel siting ordinance, not an ordinance, but an agreement with future solar projects and potentially the Savion project. So we've been researching that a little bit and discussing that with Mr. Bear. We're still trying to tackle the parking ordinance. That's been on our plate for a long time. We've been tearing apart Virginia code and looking at rural localities similar to ours to try to figure out enforcement of the parking ordinance. So I think I should have, hopefully have an email out by the end of this week where I think we are on our parking ordinance. And then I guess that's it at the present time. I have a new assignment to do tonight, to file tomorrow, to extend our reassessment time. But other than that, that's what I have to report this evening.
You can do that when you get home on the free time.
That's exactly right.
Since we're finally getting the internet, we'll call it even.
That's right. I'm not plugged in yet, though.
Thank you, Mr. Farvey.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Moving on to Board Reports, Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Building and Grounds Committee met on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Recommends adoption of the building permit fee that's attached to the packet. Recommend adoption of the rates earlier than April first, twenty-twenty-two.
Coming from committee, does it need a second? Mr. Bear, do you want to proffer that?
Be glad to. Mr. Taylor is here with us today from the Building Inspector Office. He, he has been working on this for quite some time, trying to update our fee schedule, put a different fee schedule and revise the fee schedule. Page one-seventy-nine shows some of the building permit fee comparisons across through there. But I would like Mr. Taylor to come forward and especially go over with you all the reason for the addition of the trades and why that is necessary. And then also answer any questions you all may have.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. Before I go through this, I actually found something today on our building permit fee schedule that I had to make an adjustment to, there was a typo. So is it, will it be okay to give this to you guys?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to get that corrected so you get the right information. Back in, when we was doing our budget meeting, I mentioned possibly looking over our fee schedule for Building Department. And I was digging through some old folders and files, just trying to do a little bit of research and I, where did that go? I actually found when the last fee schedule was adopted by the county, it was March twenty-third of ninety. So it's been a while since we have reviewed our fee schedule and, you know, going back from memory, it went from nine cents to sixteen cents where we are currently. So I have proposed with the, to increase our residential and our commercial fee schedule to, from sixteen cents to twenty cents a square foot plus the trades. And like Mr. Bear was just saying about the trades, we are currently, and if you look over our comparison sheet, I've included eleven different localities on that comparison sheet. There's only one other locality on that comparison sheet that does not include the trades with their building permits. And that is Bland County. Everybody else has included the trades. So currently, right now, we do an umbrella permit. So when somebody goes to build a house, they pull one permit. It covers everything, all the trades. What we are proposing to include the trades is we're going to keep the minimum fee. As if somebody does a remodel, their minimum fee on the trade is $50 already. We want to keep that same fee, but include that in with the building, new construction also. So we'll have our building permit that cover the structure, square footage. And then each trade will also pull their own permit to be covered under that building process. And the reason why we would like to include that is because of, one, it would keep contractors, see, in the state of Virginia, contractors, if they are only licensed to do general contracting, they are not licensed to do the other trades. It is required that a tradesman that is licensed to do that specialty trade. So we want to include that in to not only protect the homeowner, but to protect the general contractor too. So that's our fee on our residential, commercial side. I'm trying to find my paperwork here.
And, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, and I know we had this discussion, but for example, with the way it's set up right now, if Mr. Smith is a general contractor and he subcontract his electrical work to me, I can come in about an electrician's log and fly him his radar?
Yes, sir.
And that scare you?
Yes, sir. And by doing that, just for example, today, I went out to, there was a meter base repair that needed to be done. One of the lugs in it actually melted because of a loose wire. When I went out there to inspect the repair on the meter base, I noticed they had their generator and their switchgear right there, switchgear right beside the panel. The way they had the switchgear wired to the meter base, every time that generator kicked on, it actually backfed through the grid, in which the switchgear is supposed to prevent that. But the way it was previously installed, it actually backfed to the, back to the grid. So if a utility guy went out to work on that line while the power was down and that generator was running, it would have electrocuted him. So.
It's also dangerous for the firefighters.
Absolutely.
If there was ever a situation where they have to...
So it's pretty imperative that we get certified and licensed individuals doing the trades on new constructions and remodel. Now, this does not affect homeowners. Now, if a homeowner in the state of Virginia wants to pull the permit and do their own work, they can do that. It's not negating that. So, but we just want to make sure when a contractor has hired somebody to do the project or a homeowner, they are licensed and certified. So, but that's on the trade side. Residential and commercial, we want to include that into our fees. There's actually the minimum miscellaneous fee. Right now, our minimum fee is $50. But in my proposal, under other fees, we'll keep the minimum $50. But anything that, like swimming pools, patios, accessory structures, roof siding, radon systems, I'm proposing that we do that off of evaluation of the project instead of, because it don't make a lot of sense to try to do that off the square footage because you're putting a radon system in. You can't do it off the square footage because the house has already been charged per square foot. We can do it off the project of the radon. And in this area, I got a letter from the state about three months ago, and they're really, they're going to start pushing more radon systems being installed at homes. I know some home inspections, when they are done, when somebody is selling their home, that if it tests positive for radon, they have to put a system in before they can sell the house. So we're going to have to be looking out for radon system. The other items is starting jobs without a permit. I'm looking at the cost of the permit plus one and a half times the permit. So, and I'll never forget, as a contractor in the state of Ohio, we had, I believe it was Hurricane Ike that came through. And it did millions of dollars worth of damage, roofs, siding and whatnot. The town did not require permits or inspections on roofs or siding at the time. But when the hurricane come through, of course, there was so much damage, they wanted to capitalize on that, the damage, the destruction and start permitting roofs and siding. We were finishing a job up, putting the ridge cap on the roof, and inspector come by and put a stop work order on it because we didn't have a permit because we was not informed that we needed a permit for a roof because they just changed it. They charged us two times plus the cost of the permit, and I'll never forget that. So I think putting a fee on starting a job without a permit is imperative that we do that because I get it many times just last week. Driving down 52, looked over and I seen some grade work out in the yard. Okay, so, you know, just to check on it. There was a company there installing an HVAC system. New ductwork, new heat pump, new air changer, every, the whole, the whole nine yards. They didn't have a permit. The guys that did the grade work, they actually, it wasn't just grade work. They were doing a foundation repair. They had to dig out the backside of the house and the side of the house, seal the foundation, put drain tile in everything because the basement was getting water. Okay? According to Section 108, foundation repair, structural repair is required to have a permit and be inspected. The HVAC system is required to be permitted and inspected. Talked to the owners. They were under the impression the contractor actually pulled all the permits. I contacted the contractor and they said they didn't do it. So one of the contractors came in the office, got the permit. The other contractor, we're still trying to get him to come in. So if we put an additional fee on top of just coming in and getting a permit, I think it will slow that down. The other one is reinspection fee. Right now, we're at $20 for reinspection. We're proposing to increase that to $35 for reinspection, and that's after two inspections. They fail on the first one, we'll go out, re-inspect it. If it fails then, then we'll have to charge to come back out for a reinspection. And then the last one on administration fees is the Board of Building Code Appeals. So I actually, the town of Withfield has the same setup. So if a contractor disagrees or with the, you know, the inspection, he can actually submit to the board, our board, to be able to, you know, go against whatever was inspected and he didn't agree on. So the town of Withfield right now charges $150 for residential and 300 for commercial. And I've just basically taken that same, seems like we're in the same county, so. And the last one is soil erosion and sediment application. We're at $100 for the application and $50 per week for the project for the inspections. We're proposing to increase that to $100 a week for the inspections rather than $50. And, you know, I understand some of these increases. Some people might be hesitant about the increase. But as you can see, I've tried to keep it with the comparisons. Across the board with these different 11 localities, we're still pretty comparable to those localities. So I'm proposing to make the adjustments effective and we'll give a three-month grace period upon y'all's approval. And if you have any questions, feel free.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
If I go, I do. If I go loading that radon detector, we're going to cost me pretty dogs to hang it on the wall.
A radon detector? No, sir. The radon system is, so the radon systems have to be installed properly. So if you're in a basement, if your house has a basement, you have to go in and core drill through your slab, install your pipe coming through the house. And it has to be completely through your house, above your roof, specific requirements, and have a fan on it. So we just got to make sure that is installed properly, and that's where that $50 minimum fee would come in. As far as the radon detector itself, no, sir, you don't.
Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Taylor?
As far as the recommendation that I read, what we're really saying is that it is effective January 1st with a 90-degree, or excuse me, 90-degree, 90-day grace period until April? Or are we saying, that's what I thought we put, but that's not the way this was written up. This says effective in April. So if we're making it effective in January, we need to change.
If we make it effective now, at least we can curb some of the contractors or unlicensed individuals doing work.
Well, I agree. I thought that's how, when we came out of committee, we said effective date January 1st with a 90-degree day grace period through April. I mean, but that's not how it got typed up. That's why I was checking to make sure.
But we definitely want to give our citizens a grace period, contractors a grace period so they can get adapted and adjusted to the increase.
So I guess we need to change. Do I need to reread that with it in, or?
It'd probably, to clarify it.
Okay.
It's adopting the new rates, effective January 1st with a 90-day grace period.
Okay.
The Building and Grounds Committee makes a recommendation that the attached building permit structure fee be adopted effective January 1st and have a 90-day grace period to April 1st, 2022.
All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any more questions or discussion?
I do have one quick question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor, thank you. My question is from an insurance claimant's perspective. If you have a customer that has, say, a bad windstorm, ice storm, or something along those lines, that winds up with some roof damage and they do a temporary repair on it to get to the proper repairs are done, would that be considered starting the job without a permit?
No. In the state of Virginia, if it is emergency repair, it is allowed. They just have to come and get the permit so then that can be documented and inspected to make sure the repair is done properly.
That's what I thought.
That's the same as electrical service too.
Okay.
So any emergency repairs can be done and then come back and make it right.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor, thank you for the work that you done getting all these numbers together and the explanations here before tonight. I do ask one task of you, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Can you inspect our conditioning unit in this facility? Mr. Cook said 90 degrees. That's about how hot it is over here.
We'll get on that tomorrow.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 No?
No.
All right. So approved. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Anything else from the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
No, sir.
All right. Water Committee report.
The Water Committee met on December 21st, 2021 and makes the following recommendation. First is approving the PER for the lots gap tank project.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second is proceeding with the Dunford Road Route 94 Improvement Project.
Coming from a committee that doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just bring up, basically, this has been brought to the Water Committee. As you can see on page 243 of your package, this is about a $4.8 million project. This would be using a majority of our ARPA funds towards this project and also new money towards this project. We will be working with the engineers to see what our grant eligibility is with it. But this would allow the replacement, a lot of the old line, which you can see in there is about $500 and some thousand dollars of it. And then most, the majority of it is replacement of new line in the process. So we just want to make certain that you all, the board was approving of this as moving forward. And we'll work with our engineers on a breakdown of ARPA funds and rural development funds and PDH funds to come back for the board for funding approval.
Mr. Baird, how, I mean, how much are you looking at using that offer?
We have got set back now about $2.5 million. This doesn't include any of the, we set back $3 million. We've committed about $500,000 of it to some repair and maintenance projects already. This would probably be in the neighborhood of using probably $2 million or more of the ARPA funds towards this project.
Because the way you phrased it a while ago, if you made it sound like this would take all of our...
This, I should have been clear. You're right. It's the ARPA funds that we'd set back towards utility.
Okay.
Not, it doesn't include the $2 million that Mr. Terry was talking about early that we had set aside for broadband.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
How many families is that, sir?
I'm looking here to see what we've got on the connections.
Last count was 140. So when we talked about it in committee, I think it was 140.
That sounds right.
140, 147, something like that. It's 140 we won't have to worry about. Get the water there.
Does anybody else have any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving change order number two on contract number one for the Austinville Sewer Project.
That change order is an increase of $19,121.87, and that's for actual quantities of pavement installed on the road that were repaired during this project.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving change order number one for contract number two for the Austinville Sewer Project.
This change order adds $4,514.18 to the project staff. They were looking at about a $14,000 change order for a precast concrete box. Mr. Crisp was able to go work with the local provider and was able to get that for about $400 or $500 bucks and save us from going to change order on it. So I do recommend the approval of the $4,500, $4,518 for the change order.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Water Committee?
I believe that's it.
Board Supervisors time, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things here. One, just checking up on the water for Ms. Blair over in Ivanhoe, haven't heard anything. Did we get that resolved going under the rail or the park?
Yes. Mr. Blair was at our last meeting. I do not know if the line has been installed, but Mr. Crisp had indicated to me before the water.
They dug half of it.
Huh?
They dug half of it.
Dug half of, they were, they were in the process of installing that line, so.
Thanks, sir. Staying on the water, got a lot of residents in the, between exit eighty-four and eighty-six on the south side on Topaz and the housing developments there, there, there won't know if and when we can get them some water on that side of the interstate. I know that we had talked about it once before, and they're, they're really needing it on that side, so.
We can, the, the short answer is we need water on that side of the interstate for the residences and we need water on that side of the interstate for potential for some commercial development out in that area as well. The residential density makes it probably not enough to foot all of the bill associated with it. We'd hoped to get, we were working with one contractor on a potential site around exit eighty-four that may have helped provide some incentive money or help get water to that side of the road. We'll certainly add it to the list to look at of, of how we do the funding projects and obviously in January, we'll be coming back to you as we're doing the Barrett Mill project, as we're doing the Dunford Road project, you know, looking at, at our rate structure to help pay for the debt service associated with that.
Thanks, sir. Waste water on 52, I know we talked about that in our last meeting.
The engineering firm has submitted to VDH, RD and others for potential funding sources on that project and it has been reviewed.
All right, thanks, sir. And then I know Mr. Terry and myself spoke with Mr. Musser this afternoon after the Swearingen Ceremony and they're needing some carpet replaced in their offices. It's pretty bad shape, yeah, with all the, the COVID concerns and, you know, it is the Circuit Court Clerk Office and it looks pretty, pretty bad. I think we need to look at what we could possibly do as, as a county to get that taken here.
Mr. Smith, I've, I've spoken to Mr. Musser about that. One of the issues is with the, the roof still being in the condition that it's in, we'd, we'd like for Mr. Bowers to get the, the roof replacement done before we, we replace that carpet. So I think it's something we need to do, but we may need to wait until the, the larger repair gets done first.
And I agree with that. If, if the roof's not fixed, we need to.
We've got several areas that need carpet replacement. They did some of the Sheriff's Office, some other, that's the money that actually been in the budget for almost two years. Billy with this increased staff, he's really been able to get moving a lot of those areas. The old part of the county administration building is one of them. The Commonwealth Attorney's area that, down there is another one. There's several areas that need to have carpet replacements. So Mr. Bowers is aware of those and got those, looking into how we can put those in next year's budget.
Thanks, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Cook.
The only thing I have is I've gotten several calls lately about the dumpsters on 52, heading out there and the very nasty attitude of the employees out there with their snide remarks and, and not being customer friendly at all.
Is it both of their regular employees out there or is it?
Ah, it's really just the one.
Okay. If you will email me that name in particular, because we've had some issues out there before, if it's the same one that we've talked to, we will, we, we've got the ability directly with V and N to take care of that issue.
Well, I, from what I understand, the, the, they opened up after Christmas and of course, they had a lot of traffic backed up anyhow. I mean, it was back out the gate all the way down and he was just very, very hateful to people as they're coming through. I mean, I got two, I got two calls that day. So, I mean, he needs to be dealt with.
Yep.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Er, thanks, Mr. Cook, Mrs. Lawson.
I just have a couple of few click items here. I did want to say regarding my decision to vote to pull out the quarterly appropriation for the Apex, I know I don't owe anyone an explanation for the way I vote, but I do feel for the record, I should, should say that I did just ask the Apex Authority for their monthly financials. I know they're working on their business plan and so I do feel like I at least need to tip, you know, just put out there for a record. I really appreciate them, but I don't want to keep wasting their time. I mean, to me, if I had to vote with my heart, I would vote to, to support the Apex Authority members. I think we have a good authority finally, a good balanced authority, but at the end of the day, I have to vote with common sense and also with what the majority of East Withville asked me to, to vote for. And I just, I think it's time to make a big decision, quit wasting their time and see where we go from here. I just wanted to say that. And then also I want to make sure that staff is still on track for my boat ramps on Reed Creek. I still feel like that is a very inexpensive way to utilize Reed Creek, give our citizens a way to enter and exit the creek if they're kayaking, tubing, fishing. I don't want to be Mr. McRoberts and at the end of my eight years say, hey, this is the one thing I wanted for eight years. So I just want to make sure that we are on track to looking for some grants for that. And also I appreciate Mr. McCabe, McCabe, he's still working on my dry hydrant project on Rockdale. I think we are, I think we're going in the right direction with that and I know we have a lot of happy people out there because they have heard that they can potentially save money on their homeowner's insurance once we have that. So I do appreciate him working on that and I know that, I know that's still months and months away, but we're finally moving in the right direction there, so I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I mean, Mr. Lawson.
Get with it.
So you're set up for a terrible call.
Mr. McGraw.
Thanks, sir. I, a while ago, I forgot to thank some people and I want them to know how much I appreciate them for keeping me in the right direction. Ron Voight works out there in the, you know, she helped me unreal how much she did. Martha, I guess you'd be glad I wouldn't be worrying her no more, but she helped me a lot. Stephen Bear, I, I probably couldn't make it if it wasn't for you. So I thank you for everything you did for me. I thank everybody for what you did for me. I've enjoyed it. I've had a wonderful time and now I'm going to have even bigger times and see y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Horne.
The only thing I had was since we didn't fund the Apex Authority, have they pulled, have they pulled both of their first quarter allotments?
They have drawn down the first hundred thousand dollars, yes.
So when are we going to discuss what we're going to do with that building? Because obviously if they don't have the hundred thousand from us, they are not going to continue to exist. So y'all need to decide what y'all are going to do with the building. Although you're still going to have to pay the payments on it until you do sell it or until you do something with it. I agree it was a lose, it was losing money, but I still believe that in the long run, it could have worked if it had support, but there's, this board did not support it, so it's going to be a eyesore that's sitting up there and it will go downhill. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Horne. Mr. Terry?
Just following up, touching base, Jamie, we, like I said, Jamie and I met with, with Bo and talked about the carpet. Thank you, Mr. Hankins and Mr. Bear for being on top of that. I got a couple of same phone calls, probably different people that, that Mr. Cook got regarding, regarding the dumpster location out on 52. That's, I think that's been a problem. It's probably the same the third time and we've talked about that. So if we can fix that issue, let's fix that issue for sure, without a doubt. I want to thank Coy. Coy, I've enjoyed serving with you, been on some committees together and I will miss you, but it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you, sir, and I wish you all the best. I hope you have a really, really good time and enjoy things that blow it up in your camper and go this weekend like you were talking about and. Last but not least, kind of following up on, on the Apex comments. I agree with Miss Lawson, I think we've got a good Apex board, but from a physical conservative standpoint, you got something that's losing a hundred twenty, oh, it's a hundred eighteen thousand and some change in a quarter. Can't, I mean, what do you do with it? If you can't continue to pour money or lose it, cause it's cheaper to let it sit there here to maintain it than it is to fund it and let it lose money. So, and this board, Mr. Horne made the comment about, about this board not supporting it. This board changed because we didn't support it. People were tired of the money being wasted down there and that's where we're at. Other than that, have a happy, blessed New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. I've just got a couple of things. We discussed in Buildings and Grounds and echo what Mr. Cook said about the recycle centers. I think we need to put signs up there letting the citizens know who to contact if they have questions, concerns, complaints. I don't know if it's got any better than four years I've served here, so at least, you know, let them know who to contact. Coy, it's been interesting four years and.
Oh, I've no doubt.
Well, you've known me for a long time, but you know, first two years I sat on this board, I was, a lot of times I was in the minority vote and you never treated me any different. And for two years, I've been on the majority vote most of the time and you treat me worse. So I ain't figured that one out. But I've enjoyed it. You, you've been a good representative and you've done a lot for people that a lot of people will never know about. So enjoy your retirement, have fun. If you need something.
God, man, I'm going back to work.
If you need something, you know, we're fine with you. Besides that, folks, we've had a good year. You know, economic, developed miles, financially, personnel wise, we've had a good year. I look forward to 2022. With that being said, Happy New Year.